So we will get started February, it's not February 5th.
February 12th.
February 12th. I think I must have pulled up the wrong agenda, but it's the same one, right?
Yeah.
Is there's not anything additional on this week?
All it was, was the discussion of fall sports too.
Right. So would that would fall under, would that fall into status of athletic?
It was athletic updates, fall sports too. Yep.
Okay. So I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV. And this is our Friday morning COVID check in that we've been having for the duration. And we start with our call to order, open session, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. There will be time for public comment if there's anybody here wanting to offer that. And our items today include COVID-19 update phases, models of learning, status of athletics and it's fall two. Jim?
Correct.
Just so I, I announced that properly and then we will adjourn. So I will take the roll call first and just make sure everybody's okay with our usual order of business here. I'll start with you, Mark Terry. You're on mute, but I see your mouth.
Here, yes.
Paul Kendall?
Here, yes.
Aaron Williams?
Here and yes.
Nappy Bates?
Here and yes.
Excellent. And then we will go right into public comment. So if there is anybody here wanting to offer comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself and let me know. I see Chaz, you're here and you want to offer comment. Anybody else? Okay, we will start with you, Chaz. You can unmute yourself and offer your comment, please.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So first off, um, I, I apologize. I, I kind of wanted to bring up something with some issues that we're having with the internet with the high school. And I know that's not on the agenda for today. I, I tried to come in, uh, talk to you on, on Wednesday. Because it was the second Wednesday, but apparently someone told me that the school committee meeting days are changed, but the, just so, just so you're aware, the, the website still says second and fourth Wednesdays. So I was a little confused. So I got a little, uh, back check there. But I, the, the last couple of weeks where we've been required to stream live has been very like frustrating. And so part of that is the state requirement. So I have a lot to say.
I know who you are, but can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. I'm okay. I'm so sorry. Uh, my name is Charles Alberts. I am a math teacher at the high school. Um, I'm also the building rep at the high school for the AEA.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem.
So the one part is the state requirement, which I have a lot to say about, but you guys don't have any control over that. So, uh, it would just be me complaining. But as far as the, the internet is concerned for the live streaming, uh, I know Monday was really bad. And so you guys are aware of that, but my, my fear would be that you, I don't know how much you guys know about the other issues. And so forgive me if I'm, uh, just telling everybody things that they already know, but just to quickly go through kind of a timeline. The Friday before we required to start streaming live, uh, Paul Carpenter sent an email to everybody on the staff. Kind of reiterating to everybody that they're not supposed to have students in class join the stream. Which caught some people off guard because they had been, people who had been doing this before the requirement were setting up kind of pairs between like a cohort. Person who's in the classroom and a cohort person who's at home to kind of help build that connection between the cohorts. And so then we were being told that that's now no longer possible. So tho- those two cohorts are now basically isolated from each other. Now that the people in class are not allowed to join the Google meet in the stream. And then starting Monday, uh, the internet has been very kind of sporadic. So we're getting disconnected multiple times a day. From our classes and that's just becoming very, very frustrating. So some days, some classes go smoothly, um, but on no days has every class gone smoothly. The only three days where I have taught uninterrupted, um, were last Wednesday where I taught from home, this Tuesday where I taught from home and this Wednesday where I taught from home. So even, even yesterday was a little bit better, but when we got to the end of the day, last period, uh, there were still lots of connection issues. So I'm, I'm curious, uh, really what's going on because, um, we got an email from, from Paul Carpenter about Monday. Where he said that the outage was, uh, a equipment failure. And then from Mr. Adams sent an email saying that we are compromised by an outside agent. So I, I don't know which of those is to blame for which, uh, parts of the issues that were happening. But it just, this is also kind of maybe slightly an adjacent issue, just the Google meets constantly being disconnected is one thing. But also Google meets not having a private chat function for students to, uh, kind of talk to us privately. Has been much more of an issue than I thought it would be, uh, specifically where students who are having a hard time and, you know, want to ask a question. And I'm begging them to ask me a question, but they're, they're really kind of too shy to kind of like expose themselves to the rest of the class. So, so I'm missing this private chat feature. I'm, I'm trying to get students to ask me questions and they don't have the private chat to do it. And I'm finding that a lot of students just have too much anxiety to kind of out themselves as the kid with the question. To put it in the chat, because the chat is completely public to everybody or unmuting themselves and kind of saying it out loud. So like the, so the state has like tied one hand behind my back as far as requiring me to teach kind of live in this way. But the, the past two weeks have been kind of frustrating because now like Ashland is kind of tying my other hand behind my back. With internet that's not being connected all the time and being required to use Google meets. And I'm, I'm sure I can't be the first person to bring this up, but it's almost like a little bit of salt in the wounds that. Then I go to a professional development day where professional development is on Zoom. And then I go to a faculty meeting where it's on Zoom. And then I go to the union negotiations with Jim, which are on Zoom. And then I come to kind of bring all these kind of issues to the attention of my school committee, which is on Zoom. So I, I, all I know is that in the end, I, I just really want Google meets to be as good as Zoom. And I just really want a stable internet connection. So I can actually see my kids constantly all day. And it's, it's outside my area of expertise to really give you more details on the steps to get there. So I don't have any suggestions along the way. But at least for now, I just feel a little bit better knowing that you guys know just how frustrating it's been for, for two weeks. And I, and so I know it's on the agenda today. I'm sorry. So, but, uh, uh, I just wanted to bring that up before, before break. Sorry. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it, it's okay. Public comments. Uh, we, we can take some comments on items not, not on Gage and so, uh, not, we can't respond, but we can hear your comments. So thank you. Jim, uh, you are next. If you're ready.
Sure. Yeah. I was just getting the information. Thanks Ed for getting that over. Appreciate it. Uh, I did email it out a minute ago, folks. I apologize. It's been busy this morning as always. So thanks Ed, uh, for getting me the updated data. Uh, I'm going to show you the, uh, this week's data here in a moment. And before we get into Steven, because I want him to have the majority of the time to discuss the athletics. So as you can see, we're continually, um, dropping in numbers. And overall, uh, it's another positive trend, if you will, uh, going down positivity rates. Are lower 394, uh, the state positivity rate is 388. So we were actually a little bit above the overall state positivity rate. We're still ensconced in yellow all the way through, um, because of just the overall total numbers of cases per 100,000. Our number of, of APS students quarantined, uh, has gone down. I would say of the 52, just so you know, 23, uh, cases were at Warren, uh, of a classroom that was quarantined. And none of those students, um, have tested positive. Uh, you know, it, it, just so you know. We are finding our positive cases have to do with, um, a lot of in-house transmission. And that's what they're finding, uh, across the, the Commonwealth is the majority of transmissions are occurring, uh, in the households. We have eight teachers who are still under quarantine, uh, across the district. And athletic wise, uh, all the numbers across the, the districts that we would be playing are continuing to drop as well. So really, and I know we'll meet again next Thursday to discuss, uh, the following, uh, week, which is the week after vacation. And certainly there's going to be some, um, uncertainty of how folks behave during, uh, another vacation week. But hopefully, um, you know, we've, we've learned our lesson in terms of the gatherings. And the, um, ability to come back in our hybrid model. I will say the only other piece that you need to be aware of is yesterday, uh, the state of Massachusetts put out new guidance on transportation. In essence, what they said was we're lifting all bans, uh, on, um, buses. So you can have, uh, you know, students sitting together, three to a seat, younger kids, but no more than two to a seat for the older kids. And that was, you know, that was relayed to us yesterday afternoon by the commissioner. And then, uh, yesterday afternoon, they also put out that guidance. You know, that's certainly been a hurdle for many districts and thinking about how we go back to, uh, more in-person learning. I don't disagree with Chaz. Uh, I don't think a hybrid or remote is ideal. I think getting our kids back into the schools is ideal. And that is really where we should be focused our attention to do that safely, uh, for all parties involved. But, uh, that's where we are today.
Any questions for Jim?
Yeah. Jim, I feel like if they're saying kids can be next to each other for 15 to 20 minutes on a bus. Is it the airflow with the windows still being open?
Yep.
Like, is that sort of the deciding factor between that and say, kids sitting next to each other in a building? Like, do you feel like the guidance is about to change in that regard?
I, I don't. It's a good question, Aaron. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know the CDC is supposed to put out their guidance today. With regard to, uh, in-person learning, I don't expect much to change from the guidance under the Trump administration. I think the, the Biden administration is going to be almost identical, to be honest with you. That being said, you know, we've invested in every classroom, um, not only, uh, air filters, but also air purifiers. Looking at windows being open during, you know, we invested in the air purifiers to help with the cold weather months. Uh, I'm not thinking this is something that's going to happen, uh, you know, for quite some time, but we have to be continually talking about that, uh, next step for us.
Jim, how about the pool testing anymore?
So, yeah. So we've had lots of discussions. It's quite expensive, even after the first six weeks of, of the department, uh, giving us that opportunity. In speaking to surrounding superintendents, uh, as well as our own nursing staff, uh, the amount of time and effort that it may take us to do. With, you know, with, uh, the pool testing and then having to isolate kids and, and then do, it's really three rounds of testing that you have to do, uh, in order to get kids back in school. And it's, it's quite time consuming. Um, I'd say it's 50/50 across the Commonwealth right now that folks are, are considering. I know Hopkinton next door, um, is not Holliston, doesn't appear to be. And you probably need about 80% of your participants, um, or your folks to participate to make it, um, valid. Audrey and I have had that discussion, um, and Ed has been involved in that discussion. And at this point, we just didn't feel comfortable needing to move it forward based on how we're doing, uh, within our system. So, but again, I'm certainly open to it. If, if that's what it takes to get kids back, um, then, uh, you know, I, I certainly think it's something we should consider from that lens.
Jim, I attended a meeting, uh, the other day with, um, other local school committee.
Yep.
Members. And, uh, I don't know, maybe there were 10 or 12, 14, maybe people on the meeting from, not just, uh, like our TVL people, but like Lexington was there and Wellesley was there. Anyhow, um, some of them are doing the testing, but one piece of feedback from at least one of the communities was, you know, they made the effort to have it. And 50, like less than 50% of people are taking them up on it.
Right.
So that's, that's one experience, uh, piece of feedback that I, that I had on that. I think there was another community that, shared that it was going well and it was a big part of them being able to, nobody on the call was having, uh, students back full time. There were a couple of districts that have a couple of grades that they're able to fit into their buildings. So, uh, there's no case yet where it's working to get everybody back. And that has more to do, I think, with space issues and distancing.
Yep.
But I did just want to share that feedback that, you know, there is the possibility that you get this going and it's still voluntary whether people, participate and if you spend the money and, and there's not a real interest, uh, that could be not good.
So we're fortunate. We have the ability if someone is symptomatic and we can do a quick antigen test. I mean, Ed, Ed has that ability and we're capable of doing it and we would do it. But, um, the pool testing, again, it's not that there isn't some value to it. There is. Now, do we focus on just educators as the value? I don't know. I mean, it's, um, versus students. But what we're finding is that our process and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, and with our conversations, that our process and procedures we've put in place. At this point, um, we would probably need to hire a couple more people in order to actually physically run the pool testing. To make it work for the town of Ashland.
And need the space for it as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, uh, just two other questions. One probably for Ed or Audrey as to whether or not it's too soon to know whether there's any, um, impact from Superbowl parties last weekend. Fortunately, hopefully the snow dampened some of that. And then second question is, um, vaccination, any update on the efforts that have been made to do something collaboratively with some other towns?
Yeah. So, um, we, we have not seen a bump from Superbowl, which was a bonus. Um, that was really good. So with, just, um, I'm sure you probably saw some of the news articles. State is really only allowing us to do at this point, people over 75. They're pretty adamant about that. We were trying to do a partnership with two other communities to do staff vaccine for February School Vacation Week. But we were denied, um, by the state because they are still telling us that we can only do over 75. Yesterday and today, um, and my Tuesday, we're in a partnership with, um, Hopkinton, Westboro, Northborough and Southborough. And we are doing a vaccine clinic at the Hopkins and Senior Center. Yesterday we did about 240 people in four hours. Um, and that's going to happen again today. So, but I will continue to try to work something out. But from what I'm seeing across the state, it, it really looks like the state is going to really start pushing for people to go to these mass vaccination sites. Instead of the local level. But again, if, if we're able to get it and do it, we will, we will do it.
So, so Mark, I, let me just jump on board with that a little bit, Ed, uh, from yesterday and having our conversation with the commissioner. Uh, again, there are two components to this that I, I think, um, one is, uh, just so short sighted. But the first being, they're still pushing the fact that they don't believe educators need to be vaccinated in order to get into classrooms. And that's been their, uh, mantra for a long time. It's continuing with the governor and it's continuing with, uh, the commissioner, even as of yesterday. Uh, I disagree with that, but, uh, again, um, I, I hold that, those comments to myself. The second component is, um, there, they are absolutely moving towards mass vaccination. And one of the, the suggestions they made yesterday was that, you know, get an idea from your staff to see if they can do it on a Friday. And then the next, the second shot where, uh, they can get on another Friday. I'm like, you don't understand what you're doing to our buildings when I've got 400 staff members potentially having to then go out and get vaccinated. And then, you know, 97% of our staff said they wanted the vaccination. And in that second shot where people don't feel well, typically, uh, you know, there's a percentage that aren't. Then that's going to leave our buildings decimated with nobody in to teach. And instead of having the ability, um, like Ed and I and Framingham, we were working on to do it during vacation week. And then do it 28 days later, which happened to be a professional development day. But, you know, that's, it's really frustrating, um, to say the least. So.
Thank you for the update, though.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay. So I will turn it over to Steven. Steven, you should have controls for it to share.
All right. Thank you. Um, let's see if I can get this up here. All right. Can you guys see the, uh, the screen there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
There we go. All right. Um, I will, I'll try and make this as quick as possible. As this is just sort of an overview of what I'll be presenting, um, next week, next Thursday. Uh, I want to start off by saying, you know, we're finishing up the winter season, uh, between today and, uh, the early part of next week. And again, it was a, another very successful season. Uh, many thanks to the coaches, athletic trainer and the student athletes for maintaining all of the policies and procedures that we have in place. So, um, moving into the fall two season. A number of important dates that just led me to where we are today. And I again, want to apologize that this is coming so late. We're getting guidance as, as, you know, as recent as last, as Monday and more to come. So everything isn't finalized yet from the state level, but I'll give you everything that we have as of now. On this list, um, I'll talk a little bit, um, on Monday, on the eighth, we got significant changes from the EEA. Which has, uh, changed kind of what we've been doing all along or how we can do things, uh, moving forward in terms of numbers of kids and things like that. So, um, I'll talk through that at the end, um, and sort of tell you where we are now. The MIA has approved, um, fall two sports. Um, you know, the sports that we have, we have cheer, we have football, indoor track, swim and dive and volleyball are things that are going to be offered this season. The MIA and the MSAA had moved cheer and volleyball at the beginning of the year, if you remember that, to this fall two or wedge season, whatever you want to call it. Our league moved volleyball. Um, many schools in the state played in the fall. We weren't ready to do anything indoors, um, in September. So we decided that we would move it. We decided that we would move indoor track and swim and dive as well. Those things happened other places in the state during the winter season, but we moved it to this wedge season. There are links there for individual sport modifications that came out from the MIAA. There's also a link to the updated EA guidelines that you're welcome to click through and ask questions, um, whenever you'd like.
Is, is Steven?
Yes.
If we moved and other people didn't, how do we offer it? Is it just going to be like an intermural thing at that point?
No, uh, uh, this next slide will kind of talk about that in terms of who's done what. Our league tried to say as, stay as consistent as possible, but again, um, each district had their own. I wouldn't say challenges, but what they could do during the winter and what they could do. So, um, for football and volleyball. We are going to stay in the TVL large and small. I think the, the biggest difference, um, for this fall two season versus the fall and what we tried to do in the winter is the scheduling piece in terms of keeping, keeping it consistent. As who you're going to play. And a lot of that's because what's offered and what schools are offering it, Paul, to speak to what you, your question was. So for football and volleyball, it is the entire, um, TVL large for us, which is, you know, us, Westwood, Norwood, Hopkinton, Holliston and Medfield. So that will be our schedule for there. Swim and indoor track for swim, um, us Holliston and Hopkinton, all who have, uh, typically used Keef Tech. Keef Tech was not available to us during the winter. So the other schools in the TVL were able to offer swimming during the winter. But during this fall two season, it will just be us Holliston and Hopkinton. So our, um, our schedule rotate through them. I'll get into more detail next week about that, but swimming meets are virtual, um, and we will be.
Did we lose Steven or is it me?
It's going to be sideline only, no competition. So they would only be cheering at the, um,
We lost him, Kathy.
At the football games. Excuse me. What? Did I miss you?
We lost you for a few seconds, Steven.
Am I back?
We didn't hear, yeah, you're back. We didn't hear a small portion of what you said, but if you're reading what's on the chart, then we, we got it.
Yeah. I was just kind of going through what the offerings were and, and why it's not as consistent in terms of who's playing in the league, um, across the board. So.
Gotcha.
The, uh, the season is set to start February 22nd, run through April 25th. We plan on starting games for volleyball, track and swim, um, earlier than we do for football for safety issues. We're giving football some extra time to get, um, get themselves ready to compete, um, with the, with all of the contact with football. Spectators, um, again, this will be part of my presentation next week, but, um, our league has approved two adult spectators. Per, uh, per athlete, um, with an OK senior night. So we'll get to that next Thursday. What our fall plan is, uh, fall two plan is to again, offer cheer, football, volleyball, swim and dive and indoor track. Practices, um, following the MIAA policy, um, we're going to try our best to stay away from Wednesdays as much as possible. With, um, both football and swim and dive being kind of an outlier there in the sense of football is a safety issue in terms of getting them, that practice during the week before a game, um, and swim and dive, which is facility driven. So we do have Wednesday swim time in Natick. We will not be again, offering middle school sports again, due to the lack of supervision that Amy and I will be able to, would be able to give them. We'll talk about spectators next Thursday and, and is there going to be a difference between indoor sports and outdoor sports? Because this next season is a combination of both of those, which is, which is different than what we had before. Lastly, I will send you, I know it says at the bottom, there's a click to the protocol. The protocol is still, um, being finalized. But the state came out or the American Academy of Pediatrics came out with guidance, um, two weeks ago. That said, that schools should have a return to play program for somebody that has tested positive for COVID. So in essence, what it is, is they're worried about, um, the potential cardiac issues that could, that could arise from a, a positive case. And there is a five-stage kind of return to play policy, um, or protocol that'll go into place. That's a lot like if somebody were to get a concussion. So not like right when you are cleared from a positive case of COVID. Can you go and play in a game that next day? So you're being monitored. The last thing I'll say is, and then you guys can ask whatever questions you'd like. The significant changes that we just got from the EEA on Monday, um, are really twofold when you break it down. Number one, what we've been kind of working around in terms of numbers, the entire year on playing surfaces. So for instance, 25 players on a playing surface outdoors and or indoors. They just threw completely out the window and took those numbers off and basically said, as long as you can socially distance and wear a mask, it's facility driven. So whatever you feel you can fit in your facility safely. That's the number that you should go with. Um, I've had, we've had some preliminary discussions with, uh, with Ed and Audrey and Kelly and myself. About what that means here and what we feel we should be doing, um, in order to, you know, give our kids the safest possible opportunity to compete. The second piece to that is football. When the initial modifications came out, from the state said that there was absolutely nothing that was going to happen indoors. So it was going to be all outdoors. Questions came up about, you know, conditioning, obviously weather being an issue and, you know, what, how can we get these kids ready to, compete and have contact if they can't do anything indoors? So the state then reversed course and said, okay, after meeting with the MIA and the EEA, that indoor activities for football were going to be allowed, including, um, skills and drills and things like that. Our league has made a decision that, um, should individual, individual districts say it's okay to do football activities indoors. That we would limit it to only walk-throughs and conditioning. As well as yesterday, we had a MIA Board of Directors meeting where they then reversed course again and said for indoor activities for football. The, the maximum number would be 25 per playing surface again. So a lot of moving parts, but those were the two significant changes, um, that came this week, which is what we're still kind of working through to get ready for, um, Monday, the 22nd. So that's a somewhat brief overview of what we plan on doing for this fall two season. Again, I'll have a much more in-depth issue, uh, excuse me, presentation next Thursday. Talking about all the protocols that we'll be doing, which will be, uh, a combination of what we did in the fall and the winter with both indoor and outdoor sports. So. That's where we're at. Do we have any, any questions?
So, so Steven, uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, first on the, uh, on the fall two plan slide where you cut out for a little bit, I, I don't think you, we had you when you went over the bullet that cannot face one community per week.
Yeah.
So we've obviously talked quite a little bit about, uh, that. So we've obviously talked quite a little bit about that component of what we've been doing. So if you can maybe go over that again, because I think that's part of the time when you froze.
Sure, yeah, there were the internet issues again, I guess. So I because not every school in the league, and again, we are only competing against the Tri Valley League. There's no competitions outside the league, no matter what. But because not every school is offering the same things during fall two, it's not apples to apples across the board. So, you know, it it's almost impossible to do that. The second piece to that is we've moved football, their start date back a week in terms of competition so that they can get the conditioning and and ready to for the contact that, you know, we don't necessarily need for volleyball, swim and dive indoor track and cheer. So i- it's just, it's not going to be as consistent. We'll do the best we can scheduling wise, but it's not a hundred percent consistent in terms of who we are, what community we'll be competing against per week. I will say that swim and dive is completely virtual. So we might be competing against Hopkinton, but we're not physically near them at all. So.
And and Stephen is, I assume it's also consistent with our previous discussion where within a particular team or, you know, the like, hey, the girls volleyball team or whatever, that that team is only going to do one community per week. It may not be in totality that, hey, Ashland is only doing, but within the confines of a team, they are only doing one per week, I assume, right?
That's correct. Yep.
So it's very consistent with what we did when we talked about allowing for you to schedule a different team if if another team's quarantined or something like that.
Exactly. Yep.
Good. The other thing was they so it seems like that they're still flip flopping on some of their protocols. Are the are the recommendations still to for practices and different things retaining cohorts and and all the other parameters that were part of the previous seasons?
Yes. Yep. All that's still in place. Yep.
Okay, so so it was just, which I guess kind of makes sense that the number on your playing surface doesn't really matter at all as long as you're practicing the proper social distancing, right? So.
Other questions or comments for Stephen?
I guess, I mean, we're going to talk in length next week, but the just quick, the indoor, what they keep flip flopping on the indoor, but they are what was the last thing you said? They are going to allow the indoor conditioning?
So yes, yeah, in indoor sort of practices, so to speak, have been approved by the state level. Our league is going to approve just basically walkthroughs. So the day before a game or if it's they if the field conditions are just so bad, they can't get outside, they can walk through some plays, but they're not, no contact, no no pads, no anything, or they can do some some conditioning indoors. But we're not going to have any, you know, drills and and stuff going on inside the gym.
Stephen, that there were like limits on how many people could be like doing that at one time?
Like, yeah, so they flip flopped within a week. So at first they they waived all the limits and said, you know, stay socially distant. And now this, since then, the MIA Sports Medicine Committee and and thankfully, I, in my opinion, stepped in and said, hold on, we still think that it need, we need to stick with the twenty-five per playing surface.
That's what I what I thought I saw. And I mean, I'm guessing it's probably more than twenty-five kids on the football team. So they would do it in smaller groups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Stephen, just to to make sure I understood it, when you initially said the twenty, they added the twenty-five back, it sounded like when you said at the time, it was only for football. Is it for football or or across the board? They flip flopped across the board?
Uh, it's it's just for indoor sports?
Anything indoors, Paul, is how I understood it.
Anything indoors, which is really
Right, so so but it but it's not just football, right?
Right, for us, it's football and volleyball and volleyball. We won't have, the roster limits are fifteen, so it makes no no difference. It's really, it only affects us for football.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, so it it mean it could affect if there's other things going on, the playing surfaces, the entire gym. So even if it's a different sport, it's still twenty-five or how does that work?
Indoors, yes. Indoors, yes, it's at twenty-five. Outdoors, there are no limits right now. We can talk about what we can do, but yeah, indoors would be twenty-five. With that said, the way our gym is set up with the curtain divider, we can make our gym two playing surfaces. And we've been doing that this winter as well. Yeah.
Stephen, the last point is one I actually wanted to ask about is, so is our gym really putting that curtain down that makes it into two surfaces instead of one?
So that's what we have done thus far. The, you know, the the guidelines are as long as you can stay fourteen feet apart, that you know, delineates between two playing surfaces. I would defer, you know, to Ed and and Audrey in terms of what they think, but that's what we were able to do this winter with more contact than what would be happening during a football walkthrough. They're playing basketball in two surfaces.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm thinking about the football team, because it's the largest in terms of participation, that theoretically means we could have fifty people in that gym, which is a lot different than watching a basketball game when you've got you know, ten or twelve on a team and a couple of coaches on one court at a time. I know we're gonna, we'll talk more about it next week, but I'd be interested in hearing more details about how the coaches would and or you would plan to control and manage that.
Sure. And and to be honest, the numbers won't be that high. We're going to have three levels of of football, varsity, JV and freshman. And to be honest, and Coach will relay this message, but when when it's bad weather, especially because we have volleyball and that's their playing, that's where they need to play. A lot of times when it's weather like that and football needs to come inside, a lot of times it's just the varsity team that's that goes in and gets that indoor walkthrough that day. The JV and freshman might do some film session or something over the computer.
Do you have a sense of how many students that we have registered to play?
Yeah, right now we have about eighty. The the maximum roster can be forty-five. That's set by the MIA. So at most, we're talking forty-five would be in a gym.
Yeah, and and just for some context, the capacity and Ed, keep me honest here with what we did for town meeting and things like that in that very gym. I think we set up a hundred and fifty seats. So the the sheer number for that volume of space, I don't, I don't think we we would have concerns about from that perspective. It's more the localized protocols of the activities that are going on. Would that be an accurate statement, Ed?
Yeah.
Other questions or comments for Stephen? So Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope, nothing. We're again, we wanted like we did last time, Stephen, just to give the overview and then next Thursday, a more in-depth conversation. Looking for the the vote as we move forward to the fall two sports season.
I just asked one more general question, I guess, just making sure that Ed and Audrey are on board with the plan. I realize the plan is still evolving. But I certainly at least by next Thursday would look for thumbs up, thumbs down from Ed and Audrey in terms of their comfort level on our fall two plan.
Yeah, Audrey's not on, but Ed can speak to, because they have had that conversation, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're on board for now. We're going to just keep watching as things happen. Obviously, you know, we're going to see what happens right after vacation, kind of go from there.
Actually, sorry, one last question. Did we, in in the current season we're in, have we had any any kind of transmission issues among at least our teams? Or where have come from athletics?
We have not.
Anybody else? So it looks like then we can take a motion to adjourn, same plan for phases of learning. We're not changing anything. We'll have a further discussion of athletics at our next meeting. And and that's all we need to do this morning.
Now, second.
All in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Paul? And I I think Erin has left already. I for me as well. Have a great weekend, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.